Can I turn off?
You, okay, this is the Welfley zoning board of appeals for August 11th. Our first case is 2217 Acadia Healthcare CTC Group, Matthew Davis, 27 State Highway, map 15 parcel 142, application for special permit under Welfley zoning by law 5.2 and 8.2, mobile clinic to serve as an extension of the fully licensed and registered opioid treatment program provided in Yarmouth. The unit will be parked at the property seven days per week from 6:00 AM until 9:00 AM and return to Yarmouth. And I believe Sarah, you are now on.
Get your board.
Oh, I'm sorry. The board is Andy Freeman, myself, Trevor, Jan, and Will Sullivan. Oh, and Will, did you want to make a statement about your connection here? You're still.
There I go. I just wanted to be known that I'm on the board of Outer Cape Health Services. But I am not connected at all with the mobile van or any of its entity. So I just wanted to let people know if they have and objection to me sitting. Please, please, please state your piece.
I think we're fine. You have no connection with the mobile health.
Right, no, no connection at all with that.
Okay, good. All right. So, and with that, and with the board, you may begin.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sarah Torono Flores, and I'm the attorney for the applicant Acadia Healthcare Yarmouth Comprehensive Treatment Center. Acadia is a leading provider of behavioral healthcare services in the United States. It provides mental health and addiction treatment in a variety of settings, including inpatient psychiatric hospitals, residential treatment centers, specialty treatment facilities, medication assisted treatment facilities and clinics. The Yarmouth Comprehensive Treatment Center provides medically supervised medication assisted treatment for Cape residents who are suffering from addiction to heroin, prescription painkillers, and other opioids. The Yarmouth Center provides effective treatment solutions for these addictions that include methadone as well as counseling, and these are all in an effort to promote successful recovery from addiction. With me tonight is Matthew Davis. He is a regional vice president at Acadia Healthcare. Matt's responsible for overseeing 24 different opioid treatment program clinics throughout the Northeast region of the United States. He's licensed both as an alcohol and drug counselor and a licensed mental health counselor. I'm going to review the zoning aspects of this project and its specific facts, to the extent the board has any questions regarding how technically this kind of treatment works in a mobile clinic. Matt is here also to answer your questions once I'm done with my presentation. We are specifically here before you tonight seeking a special permit for a healthcare clinic, which is a special permit use in this underlying zoning district. The clinic's going to be housed in a mobile unit that will be driven to the site every morning, seven days a week, and be parked there only from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. It's going to drive to the site, which is 2700 Route 6, the location of the Outer Cape Health Services Pharmacy location. It's going to park in the gravel area off to the right side of the building, and it will operate there, as I said, for three hours each morning from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM only, and then it will return to its home base in Yarmouth. This particular site is 1.24 acres of upland. As I said before, it's located in the commercial zoning district in Welfley, right on Route 6 there. It is currently developed and improved with a single structure that houses both the Outer Cape Health Services Pharmacy and the Duck Creek Animal Clinic. The animal clinic does not open until nine, and hours of operations are from nine to 4:30. The Outer Cape Health Services operations are from eight to five, so that we only one hour of overlap with pharmacy for this mobile clinic. Entrance to the site is signaled. I think you'll remember, most of you were here a few years ago when the drive-through was added, and now there's a single driveway that enters at the signal, traffic signal on Route 6, enters the building to the right and wraps around and exits on the left. There is paved parking in the front, and as I indicated, there is this gravel parking area off to the right or the south side of the property. That is where the mobile clinic will be sighted. Included with my application materials as exhibit A was a sketch plan prepared by Coastal. It's the full site plan of the property, but showing in a bubble where the unit will be parked each morning tucked up in the back right-hand corner of the parking area with trees on both sides. As exhibit B, you'll also see of the site, sorry, of the mobile unit, and as well as its exterior specifications. So you should have a good view of what the actual van looks like. This kind of mobile treatment clinic is intended and designed to expand access for the treatment of addiction in remote and underserved areas. The Outer Cape was recently identified as one of these underserved areas, and as my narrative indicates, recent data from the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts has identified 79 residents of Barnstable County died from opioid overdoses in 2021. Is there, is there feedback? Are you, can you hear me okay? I keep hearing some noises in the background.
We are hearing a bit of feedback. I don't know why, but we can hear you fine.
If everyone can mute who's not me, that might help. Thanks, sorry. The state has seen, you know, a dramatic increase in opioid overdoses, as I said, 79 from Barnstable County alone died in 2021. That's an 8.8% increase from the prior year. They've also seen a similar increase in emergency room visits and desperate need for treatment programs. Currently, residents of the Outer Cape have to travel all the way to Yarmouth facility in order to access their treatment, which is a daily treatment program. This commute, as you can imagine, interferes with their ability to work and also interferes with their childcare and/or school needs. And so it can take up to an hour of a commute each day as they try and seek this treatment in order to be on the road to recovery. This clinic is intended and hopefully will lessen that strain by providing the same medically supervised treatment at this Welfley location that they get in Yarmouth. It will be there seven mornings per week, and it will be an extension of the fully licensed and registered opioid treatment program that the Yarmouth facility currently offers. The clinic will be staffed at all times by medically trained professionals who will provide the same medications and treatment services again that the Yarmouth facility does. It's going to have the exact same confidentiality and quality of care. It will be in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations for such units. The, in my application, I indicated that it had required approvals from the following state and federal agencies. That's actually an error intense should be will have before operations. It will have received all these administrative approvals from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency, the Massachusetts Drug Control Program, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the U.S. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. It will be staffed at all times by a security officer as well as medical staff within the mobile unit itself. The security officer is going to serve as the driver of the mobile van, so that no additional vehicles, just the van. It will only have onsite in the unit one day's worth of medication at any time. It's stored in a safe within the unit, and each day, all medication will be driven back to Yarmouth in the van and stored in the safe. So the vehicle will have all required alarm and security systems required by the DEA, and as I indicated, will have all of those state and federal approvals, as well as hopefully the zoning approval from this board this evening. I'm going to review the special permit considerations and your criteria as set forth in the bylaw. Before I do, we did receive six letters of support. One of them was filed with the application, and that was from Outer Cape Health Services Executive Director Patricia Nadler, and it also simultaneously gives permission, as it's their property, there will be a lease that will allow Acadia to operate its mobile unit at this location. In addition, we have a letter of support from the Health Police and Fire Departments for the town of Welfley and from the town of Eastham, all three departments in both towns in these letters, and I'm going to summarize them for you. I won't read them directly, but identify their support for this particular unit. They recognize that the need is critical for the care and well-being of the Outer Cape community, which is underserved by these addiction treatment options. They both cite the increased level of opioid overdoses that the Cape has experienced in the last few years, noting a quadrupling of overdose deaths from the year 2010 to the year 2021 in Barnstable County. They then also identify the length of time that it takes someone to commute in order to get that daily treatment to Yarmouth and back, and confirm that this is going to lessen that strain on the Outer Cape community. They, and again, they, all three departments in both towns express their support for the program. The town of Province Town Board of Health Agent Leslie Rowell wrote a very similar letter identifying the need, identifying the fact that survey responses demonstrate loneliness, isolation, and depression are mental health concerns that are exacerbated by the opioid addiction crisis, and that folks who are suffering these mental health issues are more susceptible to substance use. She also identifies the distance to the town of Yarmouth in order to get the treatment and how this proposal will serve a critical need on the Outer Cape. In addition, the Barnstable County Regional Substance Addiction Council wrote a letter dated July 14, 2022. It was served by the three co-chairs, signed, excuse me, by the three co-chairs of that council, and they wish right to offer their support for the sighting of this mobile treatment unit. Again, noting that transportation has always been a barrier on Cape Cod, especially during the summer season, and that this particular mobile unit will help lessen the strain on existing transportation services. The distance, they note, that the people, patients currently deal with decreases their ability to get continued and stable treatment. They cite that Barnstable County has experienced 673 opioid-related fatal overdoses since 2010, and that is a quadruple increase since 2010 to 2021. They believe that this service is long overdue for residences of the Outer Cape, and they hope that the Welfley Zoning Board of Appeals will approve the permit. In addition, we have a letter, a joint letter written by Senator Julian Seer and Representative Sarah Peak, and it's by letter dated August 4, 2022. They again write in, quote, "strong support of Acadia's application for a special permit." They met both with the Outer Cape Health Services representatives, as well as representatives from Acadia, and they are excited that the project hopes, by what the project hopes to bring to their districts. They note the Commonwealth has recorded 2,290 overdose fatalities, of which 79 were in Boston. It is a daunting challenge for Outer Cape residents to have to travel all the way to Yarmouth for the methadone-based treatment, which they note is a evidence-based and highly regulated treatment option that is proven to be successful in the treatment of opioid use disorders. They note the patients traveling all the way to Yarmouth means that they have to choose sometimes between treatment and their work or family responsibilities, and write that no patient in Massachusetts should have to choose between continuing life-saving medication and their liability. The letter goes on to say they believe the co-location service will substantially increase the Outer Cape's ability to respond to the ongoing crisis, and write in support of this board issuing the special permit. In addition, there were two letters of opposition, and I don't want to speak for folks who are on the line. I see that the Lindbergs are here, and they wrote in opposition, and I'll let them speak when the time comes. The second letter in opposition was written by the GM Gregorio's, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, and I see that you're on the call tonight as well, so I'll let you summarize your letters. So in closing, I'd like to briefly review the special permit criteria and provide an overview for why we believe this project satisfies that criteria. Section 8.4.2.1 of your bylaw requires the board make the finding that the property itself is suitable for the project. This site is obviously in the commercial district in Welfley, right on Route 6. It is currently improved with a pharmacy, which we feel is a very compatible use for the mobile clinic. There's no changes going to be proposed to the site design at this property. The existing gravel area off to the side is going to be perfectly satisfactory for the limited use that this mobile unit will need. Through careful scheduling and through careful appointment allocation, no more than five to 10 patients are expected to be onsite at any given time. They are going to drive into the parking area, and they will wait in their cars until such time as the security officer comes to call them in for their appointment. Vehicular traffic with an anticipated five to 10 patient cars at most will be far less intensive than the existing pharmacy, but in any event, it's going to be in pre-pharmacy operational hours for the most part. It's going to be operating from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM with pharmacy opening at 8:00. Again, the veterinary clinic does not open until 9:00 AM. Therefore, we don't believe the clinic will have any adverse impact on the existing roads, drainage, or utilities that serve this site, and that safe access and egress will be ensured through the existing traffic signals, signage, delineator posts, and pavement markings that were recently added to this site through the approval of the pharmacy drive-through. Section 8.4.2.2 of your bylaw asks the board to make the finding that the proposal, the proposal's use and intensity will be appropriate for this site. Again, this is going to be done in the early morning hours. The patient, clinic patients will be asked to wait in their cars. Only five to 10 will be onsite at any given time. The security personnel will be regulating their entry and exit from the vehicles and escort them into the clinic. This use, we feel, not only complements the existing pharmacy use, but it does contribute to the diversity of year-round services offered to the Outer Cape, and in particular, provides a crucial and much-needed treatment option for the opioid crisis that Outer Cape residences are suffering from. Finally, section 8.4.2.3 of your bylaw asks the board to make a finding as to whether there will be an impact on existing building or site design. And here, where we are proposing no changes to the existing building or site design, we think it's easy to make that finding. Mobile clinic is there only for three hours. It's going to leave every day after its early morning operation. It will be tucked into the back right-hand corner of the gravel parking lot in the area shown on the site plan. That area is screened with trees on both two sides. We don't believe, therefore, it will have any impact on existing views from the public ways. There will be no changes to the building, the parking area, or the site design. No change needed in the number of spaces or the footprint of the gravel parking area because, as shown on the site plan, we submitted as exhibit A, that existing size of that gravel area is big enough to accommodate both the van and the five to 10 patients who will be visiting at most. So in light of all of these factors, we believe we meet the criteria for the special permit, and we respectfully request that the board vote to approve it at its hearing tonight. If you have any questions for me or Mr. Davis, we'll be happy to answer them, but I think I'll leave it there for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. I think I will. Mr. Davis, did you want to add anything before I go to the audience?
No, I just want to thank people for their time, and just to add that besides my role as the regional vice president Northeast, I'm also a full-time resident of the Outer Cape, so I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to ask for questions or comments from the audience. I would like to hear from the people who have written to us who would like to summarize their letters, so we don't have to read the whole letter. Mr. Lindberg or Mrs. Lindberg or Mr. John Gregorio? Mr. John Gregorio, would you like to speak to your letter? Anyone?
This is Mrs. Jan Gregorio. I wrote the letter with Larry. He may, in the car, may not be able to speak. I have, our concerns were traffic-based because of our use of the other facilities there, and I just don't think that we would have access to the pharmacy between 8:00 and 9:00 each morning any longer, when there's usually a line at the pharmacy by 8:00, because this is the only pharmacy for such a long distance, and if, you know, the spaces are usually full at that point, so how would be, there be any place to park or any, it just seems like it would be way too congested? And I'm wondering if there are other sites that have been considered in Welfley that offer more parking or a less insane kind of driving situation, like the post office or over by Dunkin' Donuts, or the Outer Cape Health Center itself as a place to park it? Any other considerations of these sites?
Okay. Sarah, would you like to respond to that question?
Do you want me to comment, or do you want to comment?
Yeah, if you would, perhaps that would be Mr. Davis.
I think when we met with the Outer Cape Health Center and looking at both sites, we felt the traffic flow of that area would work best in terms of it being signaled, coming in and parking in the gravel area, so we wouldn't be taking up any of the other designated parking spaces in front of the pharmacy or in front of the veterinary or that area. Basically, the cars will come in, they will leave and go around the back of the building, and then come out in a signal. So we wouldn't be taking up any of those other designated spaces. It would just be the gravel spaces that would be on the side. And the process of medication is very quick. Patients come in, they medicate, and they leave.
Okay. So to that point, there would be 10 parking spaces and the mobile van right in that gravel area along the trees then?
Correct.
Both would fit?
Yes.
And other sites that had been considered?
I think, oh, I think our conversations were with the Outer Cape, and that was the decision we made, that site would work well for this.
So can you tell us about how many patients would be there? You say the treatment is quick. There might be 10 at a time. If there are 10 patients for quick visits from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, it would be pretty heavily used, right?
Yeah, I think that, yes, I think there'll be a regular flow of patients. However, it's a quicker process, so patients are in and out, so the five to 10 parking spaces will serve it well based on our experience. There'll be a max of, you know, we anticipate from a three- to five-year period, the census will build up to approximately 100 patients, but 100 to 150, but many of those will receive take homes as they stabilize, so won't be there every day. None of our facilities do all of our patients come every day depending on their status of take-home medication.
Hello, this is Larry Jang Gregorio. Can you hear me? Okay, great.
Yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Gregorio.
Sorry, I'm driving. You might hear background noise. Yeah, we're not opposed to the concept, great concept, critical need, but, you know, we live not too far from the area and often drive down Old Kings Highway to, you know, access Route 6. And, you know, I mean, no formal studies done or anything, but anecdotally, the other day I drove into the mobile to get an oil change at about 8:05, and we looked over into that lot, and almost every space was full, and there were cars parked behind, you know, the vet area as well. You know, I mean, our concern is, it seems like that lot with the vet now being there, and, you know, how important the Welfley Pharmacy is. And I think in the letter too, and you may or may not agree, a lot of the folks who use the pharmacy, they might not be at their highest level of alertness, you know, when parking and moving into that pharmacy. If we're talking about, you know, cars maybe that are familiar with that lot coming through, you know, there might be, you know, a public safety concern. The real surprise is, given, you know, what you're trying to do, and it's a great concept, and putting it in Welfley is fine, why not in a more spacious area, one that has, you know, multiple access and egress options, one that has plenty of parking, one that doesn't further congest, you know, a small little parking lot that gets a lot of use even early in the morning?
Can I just remind everybody again that this is from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, when traffic congestion is not an issue at that time of the morning? Also, the fact that it is a partnership through the lease with Outer Cape Health Services, a complimentary healthcare clinic in and of itself, where we're seeking a special permit for healthcare clinic-type use, it's much more appropriate this site than at a Dunkin' Donuts or a post office. These are medical service providers, and this is a much more complimentary and consistent use. And in addition to the fact that it's from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, the reason the pharmacy was chosen is that there is a signal there that was recently put there after the drive-through was added. And so in terms of traffic and the regulation of traffic flow through this site, it's a much more special site than the other outer office down the road.
Yeah, well, I would urge, I would urge the Welfley Zoning Board to have someone do a formal traffic study during those hours, you know, before what is planned to be the start of the service, and through it, just to observe what happens in that lot. I mean, you know, I think that something like that has to be done in order to make any kind of decision.
Good, thank you, Mr. Gregorio, and I see a hand from Ms. Lindberg. Mrs. Lindberg?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, again, I am also not opposed to this concept. I am opposed to the location. So my understanding is that the flow of the traffic at the pharmacy is not complete. The dedicated light to the pharmacy is not done. So it seems a little premature to have discussions about how there won't be any impact, and I will also say that there are plenty of cars in the summertime in that parking lot before 8:00 AM, and I am out frequently to see it. I also support looking at any other site. If the fire department and the police department are so inclined to be that supportive, they also have a light at Grove Hill, and they also have very large locations with parking lots. This site is very small. There is huge impact to the environment with an idling bus or van and multiple cars during a three-hour timeframe every single day. Not to mention that my property is going to be impacted directly by the perception of a mobile methadone clinic at the end of my property, and I'm not okay with that. And I think that there needs to be other locations considered for this project, and I do not support it.
Thank you.
With regard to the idling, I just wanted to say the mobile clinic itself is not going to be idling. It runs on a generator. The, and with regard to the patient cars, they will not be idling either. There's actually an anti-
How are you going to control that? How are you- How are you going to control that? How are you going to control people not idling?
There's a security officer there who will be in-
I'd rather not get into a back and forth, Mrs. Lindberg. You've asked the question. You need to hear the answer.
There is anti-idling legislation that in Massachusetts, you can't idle a car for longer than five minutes. That's state law. And there will be a security officer on on site. Patients will be instructed not to idle their car, their cars in order to be in compliance with that law.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm looking for, I have other people from the audience. Sure. Ms. Gordon?
Well, first of all, Dennis Cunningham wrote in chat that he'd like to make a comment and I'm happy to go after him.
I don't see his hand up is the problem.
He's here, I think, and he did write in chat to all of us.
Okay, all right.
Just trying to help.
All right, Mr. Cunningham, if you could unmute yourself and and comment.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to briefly voice my strong, very strong support of this initiative. It's a it's a health crisis and the ability for people on the lower Cape to get medically assisted treatment is is absolutely essential. And I I think it would be a dereliction of duty not to not to move on this with, you know, all due respect to the other comments about idling and and positioning of the van. I I think it's a, I think it's myself, I think it's a great spot. There's a, you know, a light there. It's associated with Outer Cape Health. So I I just, I just have to weigh in. I can't speak strongly enough in in support of this. And and for the the recovery community in general, who is suffering and and needs this and needs this treatment and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. All right, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you very much. First of all, I I don't need to speak if my letter was received, but I didn't-
I don't think it was, or at least I didn't. I have not seen it. So go ahead and-
Okay, then just give me a second. And hopefully I will not exit myself. What I really wanted to say very briefly to the person who suggested putting the methadone mobile clinic at the police station or the fire station. I can speak for people in the recovery community and while we have incredibly sympathetic, community-minded, public service officers here in town. I cannot speak more highly of them. I I know that people in the recovery community may not feel quite as comfortable having their treatment at the parking lot of a police station or even the fire station and having medical assistants nearby. Seems like a very, very good way to do it. Some people in recovery from opiate addiction rely on methadone as a substitute therapy to enable them to manage cravings and withdrawal symptoms during detox and ultimately during recovery. It's it's used for a couple of goals. One of them is to help people with heroin use disorder return to a living, normal or balanced life. And also, the second goal is that it is a harm reduction way of dealing with a very, very difficult drug. When used correctly as a treatment in a clinical setting, substituting methadone for opiates eliminates the possibilities of usually fatal overdosing. The use of dirty needles and using substances that may contain fatal amounts of fentanyl, xylazine, something I cannot pronounce very easily. And recently, it has been learned that gabapentin also is a drug that has been mixed in. The last two drugs are actually used for animals, not for people, and Narcan does not respond to them. So we we need this. People in the recovery community have been asking for this and have I cannot remember when we first started meeting around this issue, but it's been easily five and possibly 10 years since we've been talking about it and waiting for it. I heartily encourage people to move this forward with as much alacrity as possible.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Smith?
Good evening. My name is Bree Smith and I am a social worker for Outer Cape Health Services. I'm also the program manager for their Community Resource Navigator Program, which contracts with the town to assist residents with accessing treatment and care. Many of you are struggling with substance use disorders. I would just like to further express support as Martha and Dennis have said regarding having this treatment available on the Outer Cape. I work with individuals who are having to go to Yarmouth every single day and I understand not only the impact that that has on their life, but also their family's life and things such as transportation in town, rescue responses, police responses in town. I work very closely with the police department, very happy to hear about the letter of support from them. So again, just expressing my support, I I do hear the concerns that people have regarding the the parking lot and the amount of cars. I would just maybe like to highlight two points there. One would be our our goal, I think, is actually to take cars off the road by not having people driving to Yarmouth and back and having this budget a much shorter commute for individuals to get this care. The other one is, is that while that may be the anticipated number of patients, that is not necessarily the anticipated number of cars. Many of the individuals that I know that are going to Yarmouth are actually using well, PT1 Transportation, that's transportation, very insurance company. So there's often a cab that has more than one individual from the Outer Cape in it. So I would not be surprised if a if a cab had several patients coming at a time and there weren't actually five to 10 cars there. How many would would be there receiving treatment at one time? So just as a social worker, working in the town and the community with residents, this is an amazing opportunity for people trying to get care. Also, Yarmouth is very far away. If you do not have transportation or you don't have an insurance that covers transportation, this is not accessible for folks. So hoping to get more people on the road to recovery by by bringing this further out. And thank you everyone for for your time as well.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And Mr. Lindberg?
Yes, hello, thank you. I'm concerned with the idling cars in the in the parking lot and now you're telling me that the the bus is going to be run off a generator instead, which is no better than running a bus, in my opinion. There's going to be a lot more people there in the mornings. I don't know if you've ever been to this parking lot or driven through the parking lot, but one in 10 people know how to drive around the building properly and park in a proper spot. So this is going to cause issue. Also, there's going to be trash from people waiting around. They're going to be waiting, they're going to be throwing stuff out. This trash at the end of my street right now is from the Outer Cape Pharmacy. So I don't know how that's going to be taken care of. There's plenty of other places in Wellfleet. There's a light, a police station, and yes, addicts do not want to go to the police station. I understand that. Maybe the fire station. Maybe you go to Outer Cape Health Clinic before it's open. There are going to be health people there that can help you instead of a pharmacy back lot gravel spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I just want to add, can I add a comment to that?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. David.
Just to let you know, all our patients have put through a very strict orientation process where we orient them to the site, set the expectations. Patients will be in their cars before they're medicated, so they'll not be allowed to to intermingle with each other. The expectation that there would be no trash. Again, we have 30 years plus experience doing this and managing the areas. We have a mobile van in Quincy and we have a lot of experience in managing it. Again, patients will not be interacting with each other. The expectation is that they wait in the car. The process that they would be there is short. Should they violate any of those rules, they would be subject to discharge from the program. So we have very high expectation. We have a good neighbor policy that we strictly enforce in terms of ensuring that our patients understand the critical nature of the rules and the expectations of being on the program.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, let me see if I see any other.
Oh, may I make another comment? This is Mr. Gian Gregorio.
Yes.
Yeah, and you know, and we've heard a lot in this call about, you know, the good work that that folks are trying to do by putting this van there. And and I don't think anyone is opposed to that, but you know, why is it all or nothing? Why can't we figure out a win-win that puts this van somewhere on the Outer Cape in Wellfleet at a location that might make more sense to avoid a public safety, you know, concern or incident? Just a general question. I don't know how the zoning board looks at these things, but man, it, you know, it's all or nothing. There's no, there's no other way to accomplish what we're all trying to do here.
I would just-
Thank you, Mr. Gregorio. Wait a minute, Sarah, I think I'm going to take one more comment here before we we come back. So there's Mrs. Lowenstein. You have to unmute.
Hi. I don't believe that this plan was made capriciously and that other sites weren't considered. It sounds to me like this has been well considered. And I think this is a really important piece of saving lives of our neighbors, our tradespeople, our friends' children who may need these services and equally need to spend time with their families and go to work and not have to travel to Yarmouth every day or every other day to receive medication they need. I fully believe that if we, if somebody was proposing a chemotherapy mobile unit to treat people with cancer, there would not be an objection. This is just as life-saving and I urge the board to please approve it. Thank you.
Kim is Lowenstein. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So Sarah, I think I'm gonna let you hold for a sec while I go for questions from the board. So, Will?
How many cars do you, will the, will the staff out? Estimate?
None. Staff will all be on the vehicle. So what it'll, there'll be a security slash driver, a nurse. And some days a week, a nurse practitioner on should there be any medical concerns, but there'll be no staff cars. Everybody comes on the vehicle, the vehicle drives and then it leaves at nine. So there'll be no staff cars at all.
Thank you. That's it.
Anything else? That's it. Okay, Trevor?
I had a number of questions, the same question as Will. I have a question about idling. I have a question about the number, total number of cars per day. But so far, all of those have been answered. So I don't think I have any additional questions at this time.
Okay, Jan? Jan, you have to unmute.
Sorry about that. Okay, I do have a couple of questions. I don't know that there's anybody here from Outer Cape that can answer them, but I have some concerns that some of the things that were required in the special permit in that parking lot, like the delineator posts, I don't, they're not there yet that I could see. So I'd like to know when that's going to be complete, when everything that we requested that's shown on that site plan is going to be complete. And I would like that, personally, I'd like that done before the mobile van is there because it's cited that, you know, there's all these safety features that's cited in the narrative. So that's my first concern. Also, I went back to the minutes from the July 8th hearing when Outer Cape initially came to us and they were going to put some Jersey barriers around some structures to block them so that there wasn't an issue with cars, I assume, hitting them. So has that been done? Then the other question-
Meeting, I'm just trying to take notes. What July 8th meeting were you referring to?
It was July 8th, 2021.
Oh, okay.
That was the first hearing with Outer Cape. The other thing would be, okay, so there's going to be an hour overlap with the pharmacy opening on Monday through Friday. And the animal hospital opens at nine. As I understood it, when Outer Cape came before us, that gravel area was for employee parking. So what I want to understand is where are those employees going to park? I think that will answer all my questions. And the other thing I just want to say is that you don't have to convince me. I know that I think this is a good thing to to be on the Outer Cape and it's just, it's horrible that somebody has to drive to Yarmouth every single day. So that's not an issue with me.
So Sarah, do you have any answers for any of those questions? And I know you're not representing Outer Cape tonight, but-
Not, I'm not, and I don't have those answers at the minute.
If if I could speak, it's Alan Hall, the director of facilities.
Oh, super. Great. Thank, thank you. I'm glad you're here. Yes. They could, yes.
And I'm and I'm glad that Jan brought those items up. We do have all that material. It hasn't been installed yet. We are going to wait until September because we haven't officially opened the drive-up window yet. That's, we're ready to open, but we haven't opened it as of yet because of staffing issues that we have throughout the organization. And and also, we're building out another pharmacy in in Provincetown. So we're trying to do them simultaneously. We just got the occupancy permit for Provincetown. And once that gets relocated, then the next phase is to move into new space in Wellfleet. So those, those, those stancings down the delineation of the parking lot will be installed by September. And as far as the Jersey barriers, that was a consideration, a concern, because as you go around the back, is there some echo here? I can't, sorry.
Does seem to be an echo. I'm sorry. Maybe if I'm you.
The Jersey barrier was considered because there's a fuel pen, a little shed out back
Right.
around the rear. That shed is scheduled to be moved because the site does not have any more use for fuel oil. Everything is electric now to be better for the environment. So that shed is in the process of being moved in September. So the Jersey barriers won't be needed there. And so, and then additional signage is going to go up in September. Once we get to the official open and we haven't opened the drive-up window as of yet.
What about employee parking though?
For the- Yes, and employee parking will remain in that gravel area. They do come in about 10 minutes of eight, some 7:30, the pharmacist gets there. There's five staff members in the morning and then it leads into seven, around 9:00 AM. There's enough space there. The van is proposed to be parked in the southeast corner of the property, adjacent to the cemetery in that corner there. So there is enough space in the morning, early when we're there mowing, the staff is there. And I see ample, you're not ample, but there's three to four or five additional spaces that are not used in that gravel space.
Sharon, may I ask some additional questions?
Yeah.
I'm I'm still a little puzzled about parking. If you've got 10, if you have 10 patients, they're all supposed to be parking in that gravel area. I don't think, and I could be wrong, I don't think there's room for 10 patient cars plus the employees for the pharmacy. And there's the employees, I'm sure they come in before nine for the veterinary clinic. I'm not convinced that there's room for all that. That's that's my concern.
If I can answer that, I I don't know, maybe Matt can speak to this, but as far as the patients, I believe they're not all going to be there at once. They're coming between six and nine and they'll be intermittently exiting and entering. I don't think you'll have that pot where folks will be staying there any longer than what they have to do for their business and then leave, but I can let Matt speak to that.
I think Matt did. I think he said there could be, and it says in the narrative, there could be five to 10, no more than five to 10 on patients onsite at once. So there's a possibility of 10 and the employees.
I do think the other comment that not all of them will be in cars, the the, and and Matt can speak to this, but the patients do take advantage of public transportation as limited as it is, but also often do ride sharing and and cab. So it's it, while there may be five to 10 patients, once it's ramped up to fully operational, that doesn't necessarily translate to five to 10 cars.
Yeah, and a significant number of patients do the ride share. You know, in Yarmouth, you'll see our cabs there every morning delivering, you know, three, four patients at a time.
Sure, could I?
And if I can add, if I can add one more thing, when the pharmacy drive-up window is open, that will alleviate parking in the- that will alleviate parking in the parking spaces because our goal is, and our hope is that those folks use that drive-up lane and then enter and exit, and don't pack, they just get their material and leave. Thank you.
Sharon, may I ask another question? And I don't know, again, I don't know if anybody here can answer it. I'd really like to understand how many employees, I think they said five from the pharmacy. I'd like to understand how many possible employees from the veterinary clinic who are gonna get there before nine need a place to park. Because I don't, I don't want them to have to search for a place to park.
Right, right now, most, all of the pharmacy employees pack on the northern end of the facility. None of them that I know of, to my knowledge, pack on the south side.
Okay, so on the other side. And what, do you know, Mr. Mr. Hall, about the veterinary employees, where they?
That's what I'm saying, the vet, veterinarian employees pack on the north.
On the north side.
Next to their facility.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jan?
No.
Okay, Andy.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious as to where you come up with the five to 10 at any one time.
Based on the numbers in our experience, you know, that's typical in terms of, you know, the size of the facility. So basically, you know, it's on the smaller end, and, you know, on our experience in mobile, doing it elsewhere, that's, that's typical.
Is that your experience in Yarmouth?
Yes. Well, Yarmouth is a bigger facility, but if you take it in terms of scale, yes. But Yarmouth is a much bigger facility than this is.
And do you anticipate that the numbers could increase beyond that?
No, we can't. The van can only handle so many patients, so no. No.
Understand that. I mean, I understand that the van can only handle so many patients. Are you saying that the van can only handle so many patients in that three-hour period?
Yes, yeah, and we wouldn't have any more than it could manage, absolutely.
And what number is that?
I, I said before, max to 100 to 150 patients. But again, several of those would be on take home, so it would never be 100 to 150 patients a day. Be significantly less than that. But again, you know, our experience is that the parking area would be fine when we were considering it. That's typical of what we would look for.
If parking did become an issue, how would you deal with that?
We would likely coordinate times in terms of, you know, time slots for patients. We could look at time slots for patients, or we could look at limiting the census.
Is it possible for you to change the hours?
I think it would be difficult.
Really?
I think we looked at, you know, really move it to, to out at nine o'clock would be, you know, I think what we would, what we want, I think would be reasonable for those amount of hours. I think any, any sooner would be restrictive. You know, if we made it six days, I think it would be restrictive.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Jan, yes.
May I ask one more? Could somebody clarify for me? Do, do patients have appointment times?
Yes, there, I mean, I think that's, that's how the, the flow of patients and the number is controlled through careful scheduling. And, and the allotment and the spacing in between the appointments to make sure that they don't exceed the number that, that, that mobile clinic can handle in that three-hour period.
Well, I have one more. Sharon, I have one more.
That's quite all right.
So if Outer Cape intends to have everything finished that they need to do in that parking lot by, in September, when is this mobile clinic, when, when would they hope to open if they got this special permit?
I think likely, you know, on my end, it's gonna take time for all the license process for the, you know, for the DEA to inspect it, to get approval. So, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be starting before that time period. You know, again, once, once, you know, once everything happens, you know, the drug control policy has to come out and visit the site. In meaning, visit the vehicle. DEA has to come out and visit the vehicle. Then we have to have Department of Public Health come out and approve it. We have to receive SAMS or approval. Then we have to hire, you know, we're in the process of, you know, interviewing staff, so we have to hire staff. So by September, all that wouldn't happen. So it would be post any of the things that they need to do.
Thank you.
Will.
I, I have two questions. Does every patient who comes to the facility get seen within the van?
Yes, they would not receive any services outside the vehicle.
Okay, and, and how many patients can the van take at one time?
It would be one to two at a time.
Okay, because that means that the traffic out gets very spread out. I mean, it seems to me that then at the light, there wouldn't be much traffic because from, from your, your enterprise anyway, because there's only gonna be one and two leaving at the same time. Is that, is it, was that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And the process is fairly quick, but it's not like you're treating 10 people at once, and they're all going back to the cars and all leaving at the same time.
That, that was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right.
Once again, I'd like to talk about the idling cars that are gonna be in this parking lot that is not.
Mr. Lindberg, I've gone to the board now, so unless, unless you have something additional to say that you have not already said, we don't take it at this point.
You could probably do this somewhere else then. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, if not, I need a motion to go to findings.
Don't move.
Well, can, can I make a comment? I'd like, maybe have a bit more discussion just among ourselves.
Okay.
And, and it seems to me because the, 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 the statement has been made about the traffic. And I look at, I look at Combi's, I look at PJ's, I look at the Post Office, I look at Dunkin' Donuts, I look at Moby Dick's, I look at the mobile sites, the mobile stations. They have vastly more traffic than, than this business and would. And also, on top of that, we, you know, the, this site has its own stoplight. And there's none of those other businesses I just named have any, any traffic control like that. So in, in, you know, I'd like maybe to see a little, little more parking, but on, on balance, this seems to be a far better location than any of the abutting landowners suggest. I mean, what any of those properties have a stoplight? I tell you, none. Anyway, that's my comment.
Anybody else on the board with that? I will say that on the site visit, when we were there at quarter after eight in the morning, there were no cars in that parking lot at all. The pharmacy was open, but the only cars in there were ours. And that was in August. One else? Comments? Jan, Andy, Trevor?
No, I think, I mean, to Jan's point, I suppose we could ask them to produce a site plan that showed, that specifically indicated parking spaces for each of the uses, parking spaces for the pharmacies, parking spaces for the the employees, parking spaces for this proposed use. But I don't really feel that it's necessary, having heard what I've heard tonight. So I'm comfortable moving forward at this point.
Okay, Andy?
I'm all set.
Jan?
I think because of the traffic light, it's, it's the best site. I, I think Outer Cape itself is better in terms of parking and space, but it doesn't have a light, and it's tricky to get out of at certain times of day. So, yeah, I guess, I guess I'm done.
Actually, Outer Cape, when we left this site and went, and I went past Outer Cape at the same hour of the day, Outer Cape's parking lot was a lot fuller, even at eight o'clock in the morning.
One other thing is, based on what Mr. Davis said, is it, I came to this meeting thinking that if we were going to approve this, I would want a condition that they couldn't operate until Outer Cape finished everything with that parking lot, and I don't know what the building inspector has to sign off on it. So I guess I'd like us to consider whether we need to condition it for that or not.
Well, I mean, the question is, and this question goes to Mr. Davis, you have some further permitting? And when do you anticipate you'd be able to operate?
Probably 60 days. You know, by the time we hire staff, put them through the process, get the approval, get the, the actual, what we call 222s to order the medication. You know, we have to register the vehicle. We have the vehicle already built. We have to register and mask. There's a number of steps that we have to do. So I would say probably 45 to 60 days.
Mr. Hall, will you be finished with the parking lot in 45 to 60 days?
Yes, it's my goal to get that open in September.
That may be your answer, Jan.
I, I don't think it would be a bad idea to condition it anyway.
That's what I would.
It sounds like it's all gonna work out. But, I mean, they do base their proposal on the parking as it's shown on the site plan, which doesn't, I mean, not the parking, but the traffic pattern. I mean, it does exist, but not with the, not with the ballards and whatnot that we had requested. So.
Good point.
Yeah, I'd like to see a condition, just to be on the safe side.
Agreed.
Okay, all right. And with that, would you like to go to findings?
I'll move to go to findings.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I need seconds. Okay, this is an application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 5.2 and 8.2, mobile clinic to serve as an extension of the fully licensed and registered opioid treatment program provided in Yarmouth. The unit will be parked at the property seven days per week from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and return to Yarmouth. The lot is in the commercial district. The property is located on Route 6 and on approximately 1.24 acres of upland. It is currently improved with a single commercial structure, which is occupied by the Outer Cape Health Services Pharmacy and the Wellfleet Veterinary Hospital. By the way, that's the new name of Duck Creek. The proposed mobile clinic will serve as an extension of the fully licensed and registered opioid treatment program provided at the Yarmouth Comprehensive Treatment Center and serve clients on the Outer Cape. The mobile clinic is proposed to be parked at the property seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. in the gravel parking area located to the south of the building. There will be no changes to the building footprint or parking areas. As regarding, regards Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.1, the use is suitable for the project as it is located in the commercial district and is compatible with other uses on the property. Mobile clinic will be staffed with medical personnel and a security officer. The vehicle will have all required alarm and security systems that are required by the DEA. As regards Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.2, the use will contribute to the diversity of services offered on the Outer Cape. The proposal is for year-round use, which will not contribute to peak period congestion, as the clinic will operate between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. No more than five to 10 patient cars will be on the property at any given time, so the parking is adequate. The vehicle will have all required alarm and security systems that are required by the DEA. Patients will remain in their vehicles until called to enter the clinic. As regards Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.3, the project will have no impact on existing building or site design. The parking areas to be used exist already on the site. There were 10 appearances or correspondence in support of the application. The application has received support from the police and fire departments from Wellfleet and Eastham and the Health Department in Provincetown. There were two appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided in the Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. Questions, changes? Yes, Jan?
Sharon, I don't know if I blanked out or not. Is there anything in there about people who spoke in support or wrote in support?
Yes, there were 10 appearances or correspondence.
I'm sorry.
In support. I didn't list who they were.
No, no, I just missed that whole.
And I listed the police, fire, police and fire of Wellfleet and Eastham, as well as the Board of Health of Provincetown. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Should we make a finding that vehicular access is, is mitigated by a traffic signal?
Sure. Sure. I'm gonna write it just that way. Vehicular access is mitigated by a traffic signal at the entrance to the property. Does that work? Anything else?
Put the condition in?
The, I think we have to approve the findings first, and then we add the condition. Yeah, so I need a motion to approve the findings.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Will?
Aye.
Andy? Andy?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Sharon, aye. Okay, now I need the condition.
So I drafted something, but it needs some work. Or what were you gonna say, Trevor? I'm sorry.
Well, we have to move to approve it with a condition.
Yeah, but we have to hear the condition first. Right? So should we, don't we move to prove the permit with the condition? Trevor?
I, I think we move to approve it with the following condition, and then.
Okay.
What the condition might.
Okay, then we add the condition. So I need a motion to approve the permit before I add the condition?
So moved.
Okay, um, second?
What's the condition?
Well, that's it. Okay, moves, all right, with the following condition, but then, whatever. Jan, tell me the condition.
Okay, I think it needs some work, so help me out here.
Okay.
Okay, the condition is that the mobile clinic not operate until all requirements associated with the Outer Cape Health Services Drive-Thru Window Special Permit, comma, as noted on the coastal engineering, I'm sorry, as noted on Coastal Engineering's 9/13/2021 reissued site plan, C2.1.1, are completed, and the building commissioner has, I don't know, whatever the building commissioner has to do, if he does. Should I read that again?
Oh, yeah. That the mobile clinic not operate until?
Until all requirements.
All requirements.
Associated with the Outer Cape Health Services Drive-Thru Window Special Permit. Comma, as noted, as note, I'm sorry, as noted on Coastal Engineering's 9/13/2021 reissued site plan, C2.1.1, comma.
C2.1.1?
C2.1.1, comma, are completed, and does the building commissioner have to sign off on something before they can operate?
I don't know. I'm gonna ask Mr. Hall that question. Do you get a final approval from the building commissioner before you open it?
We've already received a certificate of occupancy for the completion of the renovations.
Okay.
It's just that we have not moved forward, and I would, I wouldn't move forward to open it until that site plan, all the things are completed. So we, that's our goal, is to have that done in September.
So I don't think you can add the thing about the building commissioner, because he's already given you a certificate of occupancy. So just say, are completed.
Completed, okay.
Right.
I don't know.
All right, let me read it back to you. That the mobile clinic not operate until all requirements associated, as all requirements associated with the Outer Cape Health Services Special Permit, as noted on Coastal Engineering.
Drive-thru, drive-thru window special permit.
Drive-thru window special permit. Special permit, as noted on Coastal Engineering 9/13/2021 reissued site plan?
Yes.
Site plan. C2.1.1 are completed.
Yeah.
All right. All right, now changes to the condition. All right, then I need a motion to approve the permit based on the condition, right, Trevor?
Well, I think, yeah, Andy already moved to it.
Okay, I need a second.
As just stated, so I'll second, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor. Will?
Aye.
Andy?
Couldn't hear you, Andy.
Andy.
Every once in a while, you blank out, Andy.
I don't know what's happening. I'm not muted.
Okay, did you say aye?
I did say aye.
Okay, good. Trevor?
Aye.
And Jan?
Aye.
And Sharon? Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Give us a minute to catch our breath and we'll go to Angle. All right, and the angle is twenty-two eighteen Angle fifty-three Hiller Avenue, map thirty, map twenty, parcel one twenty-eight, application for a special permit under Wealthy zoning by law six point one point five point one B to raise and replace an existing non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot, produce proposal, reduce existing non-conformities while meeting lot coverage and building height requirement. And the board will be the same. It will be myself, Andy, Will, Trevor, and Jan. And.
I will take it from here. My name's Jim Hagerty. And can you see me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes, there you are. I couldn't find you. I could hear you. Very good. Thank you.
I'm here representing the the Engel family. And as you said, we're seeking a special permit to raise and replace their existing cottage on the non-conforming, it's a non-conforming home, built nineteen fifty-five, and the lot is non-conforming as well. That's at forty-three Hiller Avenue, Assessor's Map twenty, parcel one twenty-eight dash zero. Okay, the existing home's a seven hundred square foot cottage and it has met its useful lifespan. And as this family grows, they are looking for some more space after owning the home for forty-two years. The new home will reduce its, the existing non-conformities and meet all the other zoning requirements. I'll run through the table real quickly here. It's a sixty-four hundred square foot lot. Its frontage is forty feet. The required lot size thirty thousand and the required frontage nowadays is one hundred and thirty-five. Front yard setback currently is fifty-eight point two feet, thirty is required, and we will be providing fifty-one point five feet. On the left side setback, we are currently at five point nine feet, twenty-five feet is required, and we're going to improve that to seven point five feet. The right side setback is at five point three feet, twenty-five again is required, and we're going to improve that to seven point five feet. In the rear, seventy-six feet is existing, thirty feet is required, and we are providing fifty-six point nine feet. On the building coverage, currently we're at thirteen point four percent, fifteen is the maximum, and we're proposing fourteen point seven five percent. In building height, the existing cottage is sixteen point two feet, twenty-eight from average mean grade is required, and we are at twenty-seven feet from average mean grade. So the there's a variety of homes in the neighborhood, it's a mix, it's a mix of the original cottages and then some newer homes scattered throughout. And the family's very sensitive to that as they've owned it for forty-two years, and they did not, they're not looking for a trophy home here. The design was important that it fits in best as possible. The new home is a two-story home with a, has a gable facing the front, and we lowered that gable intentionally and then raised dormers left and right at a six pitch to help to lower that profile and to fit better in with some of the older low pitch roof cottages and such. You know, as you know, throughout Wealthy in the Cape, there's this evolution of the older cottage colonies and communities that replacement of these older homes and the new ones are naturally a little larger, but being sensitive to the design, which is very important to them, we believe that we've addressed that with this modest sized home and a tasteful design. Now, I'm gonna run through our requirements here. Section eight point four point two point one, the suitability of the proposed location for the proposed, proposed location for the proposal, taking into the following. Nearby land uses, the proposed use will remain single family as the rest of the neighborhood and its zoning district. There will be no additional burden to the roads or drainage or any other public services. The proposal will not change its topography. It will not present any possible environmental damage. The, we are working with the existing topography on the lot. We are also going to capture all the roof runoff into drywells. Where currently the roof runoff just goes onto the property and drains off naturally, so we're gonna capture all of that. So that would be improvement. We're also putting in a new septic system, so that will be improvement as well. During construction, we will have erosion control at the streets due to its slope. So we're gonna mitigate all of any runoff of material during construction with that in place. Section eight point four point two point two, activity type mix of intensity, taking into consideration this proposal, again, single family home will not contribute to any additional services or housing opportunities anymore than the existing home does today. The proposal will not contribute to any additional seasonal related issues, including congestion. The proposal will also, will not alter any services to local businesses as this is, again, a like-for-like proposal. In section eight point four point two point three, building and site design considerations, there are no scenic vistas that this home will impact from any private or public way. And the parking for this property, as you've probably gone by, there is no parking on Hiller Ave due to the slope, so all the parking for this home will be around the back off of Pratt Avenue. So with that, I think I've covered everything. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, do I have anyone from the audience who wants to speak to this proposal? And Chris, I don't think we have any letters on this one, right? Chris? Wake up, Chris. Chris?
She's muted.
No, no letters.
No letters. Okay, Mr. Stamatis. At that here.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name's Dave Stamatis.
Stamatis, sorry.
I am a resident of twenty-five Pratt Ave, and my first question is, who put out the notices for this? Because we never got one.
We have a formula for how butters are notified. Chris, can you speak to that?
Butters that are within three hundred feet from the property line are notified.
We're certainly within that.
I get a list from the assessor's office, which she she certifies, and that's, that is how I make a determination who gets.
Right.
That's okay. That, you know, we, we got the notice, so that's not a bit, I just, I wanted to ask the question because
Sure.
I didn't, I didn't, no, that's fine, but I'm glad I know about this and 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 we'll move forward. I, first of all, want to make mention that I do not oppose, we, my wife and I do not oppose the construct, the new construction and the request to build up on the property. However, I just want to give you a little bit of history of who we are and where we've come from. We have been lifelong residents of this community. I have been here myself since two thousand fifteen with my wife, but my dad built this house on twenty-five Pratt Ave back in nineteen fifty-six. He was a builder and he put the road in. Pratt Ave was a paper trail. And it was a paper road and it still is on the books. But we understand that everybody has access to it and we have no problem with that. But we are concerned because we have spent a lot of money in maintaining this road over the years since that time. And most importantly, since my wife and I have taken over the property from our family, we want to make sure that as an order of condition that the road is inspected to include pictures before starting the project. And again, at the end, before the sign off of the project, we understand that everybody uses the road and we're fine with all of that. But we have been the only ones that maintained this road from the very beginning, when my dad put it in back in nineteen fifty-four, fifty-six. And we both work and we both have the only access. We're a landlocked lot on Taylor Hill, and we cannot access Summit Street otherwise. We can't get out of our property unless we go up Pratt Ave. So we want as a condition that that specific request is met. Other than that, I have no objections. I wish them the best of luck, and I think that's great that they're, they're moving forward with this. We don't have any problem with it. But we do have our concerns about the drivability of our property and the access as we're landlocked, and we need to make sure that that's something as a public record, as a matter of record from this point forward, that we recognize that fact. We'd like those conditions met.
I do not have any problem with a condition like that. That's common practice for us to photograph those roads. We, and by the end, to make sure those photographs are matched and is in as good or better shape than when we arrived.
I appreciate that and I thank you, but I just want to make sure that that is part of a special condition before the sign off of the project as a result of the fact that, you know, that's our only access in and out of that property. You know, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak to this? I don't see any other hands. So I'm going to the board. Trevor?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, I don't think.
Jan?
Um, I'm just curious. It's a sixty-four hundred square foot lot. I mean, it's not really our purview, but, and the assessor's card says two bedroom. I'm just curious how you get to three bedrooms?
How we get to three bedrooms?
Uh, yeah, it's designated as a two bedroom on the assessor's card and it's only a sixty-four hundred square foot.
We're.
Just curious.
Yeah, we're applying with the Board of Health. We're gonna propose a treatment system.
Okay.
On the property.
I was just curious.
Therefore, the nitrogen on a three bedroom treatment system into the soils is less than a traditional two bedroom home without treatment. So it's actually, it's an advantage, so we're hoping that the Board of Health will agree, and so we're filing with them now, within the next few days, I think.
Do you think that different vehicles would be using Pratt Avenue? I mean, I'm, I, I, I think Mr. Stamatis has a, you know, certainly a legitimate concern, even if it gets blocked in. Get out. Would they be using that road, do you think, for parking?
Not on the road, no. No, it's all off street park, on the property, all the parking will be onsite.
Okay.
Nothing on, you keep, we have Pratt's a little dirt road. Yeah, nobody, nobody parks, can park on there without anybody getting around. So it's all, there's plenty of room in the back. I think we're fifty feet off the road to the house, so that's gonna be all the onsite parking.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Trevor, did you have another question?
Just a quick follow up to the bedroom. If the Board of Health were not to approve it and they were reducing, had to keep it at two bedrooms, I assume that you'd keep the volume of the building the same, that you would not then therefore come back to us?
Correct, yeah. Volume of the building was saying we'd have to redesign interior.
Create the design interior, yeah, so it wouldn't affect us either way, but I suppose.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, Will?
I have no questions.
Andy?
Yeah, my only question had to do with the, to us Jan's, and she's gonna answer, so I have no questions.
Okay, and I had a question because we weren't really sure. What is the existing square footage of the, of the structure now? What is its square?
Seven hundred square feet.
Eleven hundred?
Seven.
Seven hundred.
Yep, just a small cottage, so the footprint itself gets twenty-five percent larger.
Okay, and what is the, and the, the replacement structure will be what?
The full square footage?
Once it's, it's constructed, the new.
One thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
All right, okay. All right, any other discussion on this one?
I have my, I have my hand up?
Yes, Mr. Stamatis, yes.
I just want, I just want to comment on, on the counselor's statement that this is just a small dirt road. It's not a dirt road. This road has been graded. We've put a lot of money into this road, thousands and thousands of dollars for irrigation, for leveling, for, for make it very passable. When my dad put it in back in nineteen fifty-six, it became a road that was used a lot, but it was not ever maintained as it was within the past twenty years when my dad passed away. So my brother took the property over and he began that along with myself and my wife, and we've been doing it since, since we've owned the property. We've put gravel in that road. We've put a lot of improvements on that road, irrigation, et cetera. I just want to make sure that it's understood that this isn't just a little dirt road. This is a road that we need to be able to make access to and from anything we do in our lifetime while we're here on the Cape, living as residents full time in Wealthy. That's all.
And, and I just want to clarify in terms of the condition that, that, that you would like photographs taken before and after, but that is so that you can ensure that there is no damage done to the road, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that it stays the same when it's in the other.
Yeah, there's a lot of this, certainly a lot of, I'm sorry, a lot of, you know, construction vehicles coming across, so any damage to the road that will be repaired at the completion, so it is as good or better than when we arrived.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this one?
Yeah.
Yes, Jan.
I understand why the, Mr. Stamatis wants the condition. I don't disagree with him at all. And I understand what Mr. Hagerty is saying. I'm just thinking, can we legally do that? I mean.
Sure.
Yeah?
I think so, yeah.
Applicant, the applicant says they're willing to do it, so.
Yeah.
Even if it's illegal, which it's not, he's agreeing to it.
I just wonder if it has any weight, you know, if Mr. Hagerty left the road with big ruts in it, I'm sure Mr. Stamatis would have to hire an attorney as opposed to just showing somebody our special permit, special permit condition.
Hagerty's gonna fix that road.
Okay.
With the building department, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it would be filed with the building department, so, you know, the occupants.
The condition would have some weight.
Has some weight, yes, it would have some weight because it has to get a certificate of occupancy in the end, and that has to satisfy the conditions.
Thank you, for explaining.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Then I need a motion to go to findings.
Move that we go to findings.
Okay, I need a second. Trevor, seconds, okay. And I'm thanking Will for these findings. Twenty-two eighteen Peter Angle, forty-three Hiller Avenue, map twenty, parcel one twenty-eight, request for special permit to raise and replace a one-story single house with a two-story single family home, house. The application is for a special permit to allow the applicant to raise a one-story single family house and replace it with a two-story single family house on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, which is here and after referred to as the replacement. Without a special permit, the replacement would not be allowed due to the fact that it would result in a volumetric increase within setbacks. The replacement would not physically encroach further into the existing setbacks and would in fact result in a reduction in the setback non-conformities. The replacement would result in an increase of lot coverage from thirteen point four percent to fourteen point seven five percent, meeting the current fifteen percent maximum lot coverage allowed. The building height of the replacement property is twenty-seven feet, meeting the current twenty-eight feet maximum allowed. The square footage of the existing structure is seven hundred and six square feet, and the square footage of the replacement structure The square footage of the existing structure is seven hundred and six square feet and the square footage of the replacement structure is one thousand eight hundred and thirty eight. Uh, there were no appearances and and correspondence in support or opposition. There was one question from an butter.
Or I put request.
One request. There was one request. Okay. Request. From an butter. Okay. Section six point one point five point one B, the board finds that the alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. The applicable provisions for this application under the Town of Wealthy zoning bylaws are section six point one point, six point one point five point one B and section eight point four point two. Section eight point four point two point one, the board finds that the replacement is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the replacement. The board finds that the roads drainage and other public utilities would not be affected by the replacement. The board finds that the replacement will not contribute to environmental damage. Uh, section eight point four point two point two not applicable. Section eight point four point two point three, the board finds that the building and site design will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties. And now we want to add that condition. Yes.
I've got something written down.
Okay.
If you want to hear it.
I do.
Okay, uh, the petitioner shall take photos of uh, Pratt Avenue before and after construction and agrees to repair any damage to Pratt Avenue. And the improvements there, improvements currently there on to its pre-construction condition. And then I would add, the petitioner shall file photos of the pre-existing condition of Pratt Road to the building inspector prior to construction.
Nicely done, Will.
Yes, nicely done. Will you email that to me?
I can do that.
Thank you. Okay. Went out on this. So then I, with that, I need a motion to accept the findings with the condition. Yes.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, Trevor? Jan.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Sharon, aye. And then I need a motion to grant the special permit.
I make the motion.
Okay. And Andy made it, you seconded, Will. All in favor, Trevor?
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Chris, I, do we have minutes?
I don't think so.
I don't either.
I asked her that.
I haven't got those totally completed. There was a lot of, you know, that was just the continuation.
Yes, okay.
To you tomorrow.
Okay. We have.
That's fine. Do we have minutes from another meeting? Now, I, we don't have today.
I think we did them all.
We did those ones. Th- there was one, um, one you questioned and we were going to remove a statement about how many parking spots were on the lower level.
Right.
Okay.
Right. For our next meeting, um, we will, we have four cases. Um, one is going to be withdrawn, two that we need to hear. Um, and also the continuation of the Lawrence Road. Um, and we've gone back and forth because the Lawrence Road people, we were going to move the parking and traffic to the twenty fifth and the wastewater and septic to the eighth, but their, their wastewater and septic engineer is available on the twenty fifth, but not on the eighth. So I believe we're going to hear wastewater and septic on the twenty fifth and parking and traffic on the eighth. And I said that, um, and they asked if we could hear both of those on the twenty fifth and I said no. Um, because it would just be too long a meeting and there's no way to cut off discussion for that and wouldn't be appropriate to cut off discussion. So we'll do one or the other, but not both. Not with three other cases, even though one is a can, is a dropping. We'd be here till midnight. So, so that's what's coming up. We will have another site visit, but you actually get a week off next week. Rest up.
But that meeting's gonna be a long one.
Yes, that meeting will be a long one. Yes, yes. I believe it's, it's a house moving in on Ocean G Drive and I don't remember what the other one is, but. Yeah, yeah, so.
We, uh, we can risk our lives by doing a site visit. We did, we were out over the cliff.
I know, I, I hate the site visits on Ocean G Drive. They're almost worse than Lieutenant Island. I don't know which is.
We'll let, uh, Will go first.
You go walk over there and see if it's a good idea, yeah.
This meeting go first.
Yeah.
I'll do that tomorrow. I don't have to do it tonight.
No, you don't have to do it tonight.
All right.
You do not have to do it tonight. And, um, and I will. I made Jan send you the one with the other condition so you can perfrite it since I'm not sure I got it all.
Oh, the condition that I.
Yes, right.
Am I sending that to?
To me.
To you, yeah.
To me.
Yeah.
Just those conditions to me. And I will get them all to Chris after in the morning. Send them to me in the morning. Yes. All right. And then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, I second. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Bye, good night, Chris.
Good night. Chris, stick, stick around a minute and turn off the recording so I can do logistics.